Testing, yes, thank you. All right, guys, we're going to be getting started here, just a few seconds. Going to stand by for the scroll. Okay, standing by, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, three.
Good morning, everybody. Okay, we have an audience here, and thank you for those watching on KPTS and the county websites and the social media. So with that, thank you, Commissioners, for being here. We will open, call the meeting to order on Wednesday, April 12th, for the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Madam Clerk.
Invitation, to be led by Pastor Brent Borkington from Ridge Point Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Father, you're better to us than we deserve. We're grateful for your kindness to us. Thank you for this nation. Thank you for this state. Thank you for this county. And I am privileged to ask your blessing on the meeting, that there would always be compassion and kindness and listening ears, even when there's disagreement. We pray for wisdom. This is a great, great county, and I thank you for these men and women who are helping to keep it running smoothly. So please, Father, bless this meeting and give joy and give wisdom. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Brent. We have a lot of people come and pray before, and that was a very good one. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of the Strategic Communications Department. I have a couple announcements that are timely, and you've heard them before, but they're always good to talk about. So Cedric County Fire District One is currently under the State of Kansas imposed burn ban for the month of April. The ban includes all open burning of any waste, including vegetation and wood waste, structures or other material on any premises. Open burns can resume after May 1. For questions regarding the burn ban or fire safety in general, please contact the Cedric County Fire Marshal. Also, this weekend, the Register of Deeds and her team will be at the Veteran Benefits Resource Fair, Saturday, April 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00, along with the Kansas Commission on Veterans Affairs and the Department of Veteran Affairs. They are teaming up to make it simple for veterans to access the state and federal benefits and services they have earned and deserve. This will be held at Town West Mall at the Northwest entrance, and if you have questions, you can find information on our social media, or you can go to va.gov/wishtawhealthcare. For today's good news, last week, we had a proclamation for our Emergency Telecommunications Week, and that is this week, and so we put together a little video to honor those folks.
Whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and medics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call 911. And whereas the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services are public safety telecommunicators, now therefore be it resolved, the Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator. In honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
Again, since that is this week, we just wanted to take a special moment to shout out to those folks. Also, this week, April 9th through 15th, is National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. Animal control officers are empowered with duties similar to other law enforcement and public safety agencies, and are responsible for enforcing local ordinances and state laws for the care, treatment, and licensing of domestic animals. We had a chance to meet with a few of the officers and learn about their work, and you can see it here.
We do go out on everything from dog bites to animals running loose. We deal with livestock a lot in the county, cows, goats, sheep, emus, ostriches, camels. We do a lot of outreach, a lot of answering questions. There's a lot of, a lot of people that just want to know how to handle certain situations. One was a buffalo that we had to catch. It had gotten out, and it involved pretty much the entire shift of the Sheriff's Department. We ended up sedating the animal, robing it, and getting it contained on a trailer with pretty little effort, I mean, as far as trying to catch it, but it took about 25 people to pull it out of the trailer. I think my favorite part now is basically getting to be able to help people. We do a lot of work with helping the general public with all kinds of things with their animals.
I was staying at Paradise Inn, and Mitch came out and saw me, and he gave me a couple bags of dog food and a big bag of treats. In fact, I think those treats lasted until just about two weeks ago.
Really?
Yeah.
I need to see my finances more.
We do everything we can, if it is a loving home, to keep the animal in the home. We don't want to see you give your dog up because you can't afford to feed it this week and could next week, or your cat because he just keeps having babies and you just need him fixed.
We try to make sure that everybody knows that if we've got it, all they got to do is ask.
Again, thank you to the hardworking and dedicated animal care and control employees of Cedric County. One last item, Cedric County, hold on, I'm getting excited here. Cedric County Job Fair at the Wichita Workforce Center will be on April 24th. From 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., representatives from the Health Department, Public Works, Corrections, Sheriff, Calm Care, Treasurer, and Human Resources will be ready to help people explore endless opportunities and find their future here at Cedric County. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. As always, any questions or comments? Good stuff. I'm glad we're doing this before and as part of the record, so thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did not receive any emails by the 5 o'clock yesterday deadline, and we do not have anybody signed up to address us at the public comment, and I don't see anybody wanting to comment, so we will close the public agenda and move to the next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of March 22nd, 2023.
Commissioners, you've had a chance to review the minutes of March 22nd. Are there any comments, adjustments? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve the minutes of March 22nd.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, being no comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, resolution reappointing Dr. Julie Evans to the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mike Papun, County Counselor. We can take Items B and C together. They're both appointments to our Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board, a 10-member board. Each of you have two appointments. While there are no strict requirements for appointments, we try as nearly as possible to have a veterinarian, second or third-class city animal control officer, a kennel breeder, a member of an animal care organization, or a member of the Kansas Humane Society on this board. Both of these appointments, Dr. Julie Evans, who by the way is a veterinarian, and Shanti Malo... Malokachek?
McCollough.
Okay. Actually, her previous... She's recently...
McCollough.
McCollough. And I actually practiced that, which is sad. And I still couldn't do it. But she volunteers for Wichita Animal Action League. Both are Marie appointments. Shanti is Commissioner Howell's appointment. Previously, she was Shanti Liker. She's been on the board for a while, and as is Dr. Julie Evans. Both the appointments are in proper form, resolutions are in proper form, ask you to approve the resolutions.
Okay, Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, quick comment, thank you, Chairman. I just, Dr. Evans isn't here today, but she's a veterinarian, and she's an owner of Ark Valley Animal Hospital and Valley Center, and this is a reappointment, and she has been a real asset to this board, and Valley Center in particular. A lot of people really appreciate what she does in this space, so it's a lot for people to serve, and I just, I never want anyone that serves on any of these boards to not understand and fully, fully realize that we appreciate all that they do in these spaces, so I'm grateful for Dr. Julie Evans.
Okay, good comments. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I would say I've attended this board, and the people there on that board do a great job. I'd like to also shout out to Susan Erlinwine. She's, she chairs that board, and she does a great job as well. Anyway, Shanti has been very faithful and very passionate about topic of animal control, animal care, so I think she's an excellent appointment, and I appreciate her service to the county. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we would approve both Julie Evans, Dr. Julie Evans and Shanti McCollough to the Animal Care Advisory Board.
A second? Okay, been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And I don't, yeah, neither, neither party's here. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
New business. Item D, donations for DeAngelo Tate Memorial to Calm Care for Suicide Prevention.
Okay. Deputy Manager, Tim Kaufman.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tim Kaufman. On behalf of Calm Care, I'm here today because Calm Care received two donations totaling $125,000 for the Community Crisis Center Emergency Crisis Line, or 988. These donations are in honor of DeAngelo Tate, a 23-year-old from Winfield. His obituary indicated that he is mourned by his family and friends, and that it was their request that any donations go to the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. Calm Care serves as the local lifeline, and we will utilize this funding to pay it forward in remembrance of DeAngelo, and continue our suicide prevention education efforts by applying these donations towards scholarships for others to attend mental health first aid offered by Calm Care. All losses to suicide are tragic, and even more so when someone is in the prime of their life. The impact on those who lived, who loved this individual are incredibly difficult. I'm going to use this moment to educate everyone on the fact that suicide does not discriminate, mental illness does not discriminate with regards to age or any other demographic. Mental illness impacts one in four individuals at some point in his or her life. I'm very proud of the Calm Care Community Crisis Center staff and the work that they do, taking phone calls from individuals and meeting with them in person if they're struggling with suicidal thoughts. The employees at Calm Care care, and they want to help. We also have staff that are trained to deliver mental health first aid, which offers tools to help start a conversation and listen compassionately to someone who has thoughts of suicide and gives the, and help give them, by help them, by giving them information on community resources where they can get help. As a reminder, our Community Crisis Center is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Anyone can pick up the phone and call or walk in for help. One can call 988, or they can call our local crisis number, 660-7500. If you are worried about someone, let them know that you care and ask them if they're thinking about death. While depression and thoughts of suicide may linger over time, the impulse to act is very brief and in the moment, so listening and talking to someone and helping connect them to services while they're in pain can prevent a suicide. I'm here to ask that you acknowledge the donations and authorize the Chairman to sign a letter of appreciation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim. That's very kind of these people and tragic stuff, so is there any other comments, questions? Being none, I'll make a motion to, to approve the acceptance of this donation. Second. There's a motion and a second, and being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again, Tim.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item E, DER 2022-00013, Amendment to Article 3-102 of the Wichita-Cedric County Subdivision Regulations pertaining to Extraterritorial Subdivision Regulation Authority for Derby.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. So as you heard, this item is to update the Wichita-Cedric County Subdivision Regulations. The recommended action would update specifically Article 3-102 of these regulations, and it would reduce the Extraterritorial Subdivision Regulation Authority area for the City of Derby. This action is recommended because in 2022, the City of Derby revised the limits of its extraterritorial subdivision authority to remove this area, and here's a graphic of the area up on the board. As you can see, the location is generally located north of 63rd Street, south between the Ark Kansas River and K-15. Approximately 40% of the area has been annexed into the City of Wichita already, and those are indicated on this map in some of the pink lines and City of Wichita listed over them. In terms of background, the Wichita-Cedric County Subdivision Regulations provide extraterritorial subdivision authority for four cities, Hayesville, Derby, Mulvane, and Valley Center. There's also a provision for a three-mile ring around the City of Wichita. From discussions with staff, it sounds like these were put in place when the Wichita subdivision regulations were first created. And please note that the Kansas statutes also allow for cities to have subdivision authority outside their city boundaries. However, that process is different than the one that we're talking about now with the Wichita-Cedric County subdivision regulations. In terms of review, on January 5th of this year, the Wichita-Cedric County Planning Commission set a public hearing to consider this amendment. On February 9th, the Planning Commission held that public hearing, considered this request, and recommended approval 13-0. No members of the public spoke on this item. So in terms of action, it's recommended that the Commission approve the Planning Commission's recommended action and adopt the resolution. You also have the following alternatives listed, and those are to override the MAPC recommendation, which will require four or five votes. You can also return the case, as always, to the MAPC for additional consideration with a statement about why, and that requires a simple majority, three of five. With that, I'll take you through some of the graphics. So here's the map showing the areas we've talked about. If we go on to the next one, this shows the entire Derby Extraterritorial Subdivision Authority area, and you can see the subset in the black outline of the area that's being exempted out. This is where you can find in the subdivision regulations the references to 3-102. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I know we'd been briefed as well, and had a time to review and come up with any questions, so is there any comments or questions from the Commission? I don't see any, but, yeah, okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you. Thank you for the briefing this morning.
Sure.
Do you know what the genesis of this action was? What started this?
Yeah, so after the briefing on Friday, we reached out to City of Derby's staff. It's my understanding from talking with our staff that Derby has an agreement with the City of Wichita for water supply, and as part of that agreement, this territory was not included, and so that is, is what has prompted this. I also, my assumption is also that since a majority of the, or almost a majority of the area has been annexed into the City of Wichita already, it probably was an area that they were willing to say, you know, maybe it's not a good fit for Derby at this time.
Okay, all right, that's a good answer. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, you want to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. I'd make a motion, we would approve the MAPC's recommendation, adopt the resolution that does, as described this morning. Thank you.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks again, Scott. Next item, please.
Item F, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on April 6th, 2023.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas Purtsin, Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts that was held on April 6th results in one item, and this item is the On-Call Highway Guard Rail Maintenance for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Collins and Herman Incorporated, and we're establishing contract pricing for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any questions or comments on this item? I don't see any. I'll make a motion that we approve the item as presented by Joe.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, being no comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Commissioner, good morning. Tom Stiles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items G through O this morning.
Okay, Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve all items but item K. To be clear, I'm very supportive of item K, but I've asked Tim Kaufman to come and give us a, a quick briefing on what that grant represents. There's a lot that goes on there, and I think we, we should hear a little bit more, so I'd like to make that motion, approve all items minus item K.
Second. There's a motion and a second for consent items G through O with the exception of K. No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, item K.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Tim Kaufman, representing Calm Care. The item K is the acceptance of a grant in the amount of roughly $132,000 called the PATH Grant, and the PATH Grant has been a grant that KDads has awarded Calm Care for more than 20 years now, and it's really the genesis of homeless service, or mental health services to the homeless population in our community. It was, it was initiated as a grant to ask community mental health centers to start services, specialized services to that homeless population. This grant represents two full-time outreach case managers, a half-time certified peer support specialist, and then a 40% administrative support person. It's federal funding that comes through the state, and so there are some reporting requirements, and so they fund part of the staff person that does that reporting as well. But it is, from my perspective, the front door to Center City, which is where we deliver mental health services to persons experiencing homelessness. That front door is those two outreach case managers who are out every day, half the day in the community, driving around, stopping, checking in on people, making connections, and then they spend the other half of the day in the office, making phone calls, making connections, that sort of thing, and they have a walk-in clinic every day as well. So there are, there's always someone available to help introduce a person experiencing homelessness to mental health services over at our Center City location. Center City is about 18 employees, both, the majority of them are case managers. We've got therapists, we've got nursing staff, we've got medical staff there, so we provide a full array of mental health services to individuals that are experiencing homelessness. It's co-located at UMOD, so it's available for individuals who are experiencing homelessness and need to get other services. They're able to go to a Calm Care site, you get those services at that location as well. But again, the outreach staff are really what make the program work, because they're out in the community. Oftentimes, it may take six months or more of engagement to encourage someone to go into services. The goal, the whole point of the PATH Grant and these staff is to introduce people to Calm Care and get them connected to mental health services, and so that's the point of the PATH Grant and those staff. I'll admit that I have used our staff before in this way. If I've seen someone who looks like they may be in distress, I've called our Center City program and asked them to go check. Many of you know Marcel Bell. She's out there in the community all the time doing that sort of thing, does a wonderful job connecting with people, engaging with them, and helping get them into services. So if anybody ever has questions or concerns about that program, they can call 660-7800, and we've got people that are ready to help. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have about this grant or about services at Center City.
Okay, well, much appreciated. Thanks for the presentation, comments. Mr. Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Tim, thank you. So appreciate that. I felt like that needed to be highlighted. I'm very much in support of this, of this grant, but I'm very much in support of what Calm Care is doing in, in housing over there, and I think many people don't realize that, that we have a rather flourishing Calm Care housing department over there that is really engaging those that are taking and partaking in mental health services but are also experiencing homelessness or unsheltered in some, in some regards. Jamie Williams, her team at Calm Care Housing, that's our housing manager at Calm Care, but her team over there, they're very engaged, they're doing a lot of work, a lot of work that our community doesn't know that they're doing. So I, I wanted to take the time, and I appreciate all that insight, that we could highlight this, this grant and what this grant does, not just what it is, but what, what this does and what this allows our community to do. So I appreciate that insight.
Absolutely.
Okay, with that, make a motion.
With that, Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item K on consent agenda, the notification of our grant reward for PATH.
Okay, I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Tim. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Okay.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. For legislative updates, what I have for you is the House and Senate concluded last Friday in the early morning hours, which concluded this year's regular legislative session. They are adjourned until April 26th, when they return for the veto session. The plan is to adjourn on, the plan will be to adjourn on April 28th. However, we are hearing that it is unlikely that they will be able to get that work done in three days, as they will also have to address the omnibus appropriations bill. On the good news side, we heard that Governor Kelly signed into law our county funds bill, House Bill 2082, that allows county to create code inspection and enforcement funds, our opioid addiction fund, as well as allowing county equipment reserve funds to be used for technology expenses, so good news there. On the budget side, House and Senate both passed a mega-budget bill, which includes $142 million for the WSU-KU biomedical center, also includes $22 million for Ascension Via Kirsty emergency room expansion, increases to certain Medicaid rates and EMS services, $50 million for matching funds to local governments. $50 million for matching funds to local governments pursuing federal grants as part of the infrastructure bill, and $800,000 for health departments. Also want to talk about, we talked a lot about the sales tax for groceries. That was eliminated. The state sales tax was eliminated with the date of effect on January 1 of 2024. We did hear that the local sales tax on food was not included. Conference Committee report brief, Senate Bill 8 was encompassed in that Conference Committee report, and that also included the government competition bill. However, that was not, that was not addressed by the Senate before adjournment. It still could happen during the veto session, but we are hearing that that will likely be vetoed. Commissioner Howell may want to comment on this. House Bill 2021, the juvenile justice bill, that did not pass, but we also understand that that version of the bill was not what it started out to be. And so I think that probably next year, we'll have to continue work on that. Senate Concurrent Resolution 1611, this is what limits assessed valuations to no more than 4%, with the exception of new construction. We understand that this is not going to be taken up at all, and it's expected to be taken up next year. Elections bill, Senate Bill 209, this gets rid of the current three-day grace period for mail-in ballots to be returned after Election Day, and requires all advance voting ballots to be returned by 7:00 PM on Election Day. This bill passed in the Senate but didn't get a vote in the House. So it is, it could be brought up again during veto session, could, it could pass in the House, but we do believe that if it, if that does happen, it will likely be vetoed. And then legislation on banning or restricting ballot boxes, that did not advance at all. So these are my updates. I can tell you, it'll probably be quiet in the next couple of weeks. We will resume regular updates with Jason and Jessica, starting on May 1. So as always, I'm happy to answer any questions or take any direction from you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. It doesn't really have, my question doesn't really have to do with the legislature right now, but it, with the process in Topeka. And I mentioned this briefly yesterday during our staff meeting, but we've been asking the state for $25 million for the regional mental health facility for some time, but I don't have an update. I don't know where that's at, or if anyone's even working it, or if it's ever going to pass. So if we could find out from our lobbyist or whoever is working that, where exactly is that, so that we can decide if we're moving forward with that or we just drop it?
Well, my understanding is we are getting updates regularly from K-DADs. And, Tim, I'm going to ask you to come up just to make sure that I don't say anything wrong, but I think we're supposed to be hearing something very soon. We get updates regularly, I would say, from K-DADs about every week, but they continue to say, you know, "We apologize, we're trying to get you updates, but we're going to have to move this out another week." Am I saying anything incorrect?
She was 100% correct. The information that we've received is they're working, there are four different buckets of funding, and they're working to make sure that they get highest use out of all the funding. Every information that I've received indicates that it's just, it's inevitable that we will get that award, but we haven't received information yet. They want to make a big announcement on all of them. And so I think that, again, we're hopeful even late this week that we'll get that information.
Okay, well, we need to keep their feet to the fire, because at a certain point, even if we get the money, because it's ARPA money, it's going to be very hard to spend it. It's critical, it's top of our list. So I just want to make sure that we keep the feet to the fire in Topeka, and we get this thing moving.
Understand.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been a very unusual session, I thought. I'm kind of glad it's over. I have some huge disappointments. I think we have some work to do. I hope on our legislative platform, we should start building that now for next year. And may I suggest we go ahead and add the issues of suspended driver's license issues in Cedric County to that list, as well as juvenile justice issues. I think if you talk to anybody from DCF to even KDHE, certainly Kansas Department of Corrections, Juvenile Corrections, talk about folks here within the county, that our district attorney, our sheriff, our, some of the prosecutors that deal with juvenile offenders here in Cedric County, I think everyone seems to be singing the same song that we have a problem. And unfortunately, I think there's been essentially two people in the Senate that, for some reason, don't quite understand exactly what's going on here. This passed the House with huge numbers. I forget the numbers now, but it was very high. House Bill 2021 was a much better bill when it left the House, and the Senate essentially stripped most of the good stuff out of the bill, and what was really left was just a remnant of what we started with. But even that did not pass. It had a failed vote on the floor, on the floor of the Senate. So I think we have some work to do. I think we need to work with a couple of legislators, specifically on the Senate side, and hopefully, maybe in the next year, we can help, help them understand what we're dealing with here in Cedric County. But that needs to be added to the list. Again, I think we need to try again, but it is certainly lost this year, so it's not going to come back. I would also say SCR 1611. I know that some T people are debating whether that will come back during veto session. I think it will. I'm talking to some folks. I think we're going to see that come up for a vote on April 26th or 7th or 8th, or whatever that will be. I don't think that's gone away for this year. I also know that, yes, Senate Bill 8, the governor's essentially promised that she would veto that. That includes our food sales tax reduction to zero for state, starts January the 1st, but she promised if there's a single rate income tax, that she promised she would veto that. So I think everybody expects a veto on Senate Bill 8. So again, I think that some of these ideas will come back, certainly next year, so we ought to be, we need to be ready for the government competition bill and some other things that are going to be continuing discussion. But I don't think, I guess I have no other comments. This has just really been a tough session this year. Thank you for all your work today, all your work, Tom. You did a great job this year. Thank you, and Justin, too. Thank you, all you've done.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion, receive and file? Okay. Motion, receive and file?
Second.
Most, you have other questions?
No, no other questions.
Okay.
Is that a motion or?
Yeah, I did a motion.
I'll second that, thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Yes, committee reports. Dennis, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I'm going to preface this with a little statement, and then I'll go into the committee report. I know we've had a lot of accidents at 21st Street and 167th. We just had another one last week. It is a wide-open intersection. You can see for a mile every direction. The only reason that we're having accidents is because of human error. We, Public Works is working diligently on this intersection, and we're looking at a couple fixes, but I just want the public to know we have not forgotten it. It's not the worst intersection, actually. If we rank all of the intersections in Cedric County for accident potential, but it probably has the most attention. So I wanted to preference what I'm going to, preface what I was going to say about the committee reports, just letting people know that really, human error is causing most of the accidents that we have here in Cedric County. People just are not driving safely. So yesterday, we had our WAMPO meeting, and WAMPO would ask KDOT to do a study on accidents in Cedric County and Johnson County. What's the difference between those two? Well, I'll tell you, looking at the stats from 2017 to 2021, and we'll start with the population of the two counties. Population in Cedric County in 2019 was about 513,000. Population in Johnson County was 591,000. So Johnson County has a few more people. Fatal crashes in Cedric County from 2017 to 2021, 291. Fatal crashes in Johnson County, 120. They have two to three times fewer fatal accidents in Johnson County. Fatal crash rates per 10,000 people. In Cedric County, it's 11.34, in Johnson County, it's 4.03. The first one was the total number of crashes. Now, we're going to talk about how many people, because some of the crashes have more than one fatality. In Cedric County, we had 315 fatalities. In Johnson County, 129. So what's this cost? Well, the cost of those accidents in Cedric County was $4.4 billion. In Johnson County, it was $2 billion. What's the difference? We're actually having WAMPO take a look, a little deeper dive, on why two to three times more fatal accidents and twice as much property damage. But it really still boils down to human error. People aren't doing what they need to do when they're getting behind the wheel. So these are very sobering numbers, I think. And I just want to highlight that, that there is an issue in Cedric County on how people are driving. So I just wanted to pass on what I heard yesterday during the meeting, and we're probably going to get Public Works to start working with the cities and see what we can do to lessen those, or take a look at what WAMPO can do. But something has to be done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Dennis on that. I'll probably post about this on my Facebook page a little bit. I did a little bit yesterday, but I'm going to add some over to that today. But it is a very interesting report, and I think he makes some great points. There's only one stat that actually said you're counting slightly better than Johnson County, and believe it or not, that was on the issue of impairment. But it was very close. But every other single, every single stat on there was drastically worse for Cedric County than for Johnson County. I wanted to talk a little bit about yesterday's staff meeting. We had a, about a two-hour staff meeting yesterday, and we had, we had everyone that relates to criminal, criminal justice in the room, from the sheriff to the DA, 911, forensic science, we had our police chiefs of Wichita and Derby, and of course Sheriff Easter. We had a corrections staff, and I'm not sure who else was in the room, but that's, that's a pretty good collection of wisdom in the room. And I just think that for two-hour meeting, talking about trends in Cedric County and challenges in Cedric County, it is a very sobering presentation. And I think that we have our challenges ahead of us. I don't know how we're going to solve some of these things. I, I'll be looking forward to more discussion from my colleagues and from staff on how to begin to solve some of this, but it's a very sobering presentation. And if you're interested in criminal justice, if you feel like they're, we're not doing enough in terms of criminal justice in Cedric County, or you think we spend too much money, or whatever your thoughts are, it might be interesting to go back and take a look at that. It's on YouTube. I'm sure people want to go back and take a look at that. I would encourage people to spend the time to listen to that two-hour meeting. I think it was very, very educational. Appreciate staff putting that together. I just want to make sure people are aware of the opportunity to see that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Exploration Place has 200 scholarships available if your child is eligible for free or reduced lunches for their summer camp programs. That is available to apply until May 19th. So if you are interested in having your child go to summer camp at Exploration Place, and I'll just say that they're fabulous camps. Each week has a different theme, from Minecraft to rockets and all kinds of fun stuff. My son has always really enjoyed their summer camps. You can apply, like I said, until May 19th. The information is on the Exploration Place Facebook, and then I shared it as well. So hopefully, we will have enough people apply to fill those scholarships. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I was going to mention both. The WAMPO meeting yesterday was really good. There was also a presentation about artificial intelligence out at Wichita State, which was kind of mind-boggling. And I think it's probably something that we ought to encourage our, because our, we do have grants writing, and, yeah, it's really a unique thing about how they could put in just a request for a grant about water or something, and boom, it come up and said yes, and even gave a footprint of how to, a draft of what the grant would look like that you could go in and, and adjust. And that's just one item of many, so maybe it's worth having. Who was that that presented again?
Troy Taber.
Troy Taber, maybe have Troy. We look into coming and showing our departments that, or maybe even a small workshop on it, maybe. You think so?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it was very worthwhile. And so it was a good WAMPO meeting yesterday, and also, thank you, Commissioner Howell, for bringing up that, that crime and crime prevention and our status yesterday. I thought that was just outstanding. I did see it got a lot of publicity on one of the news medias last night. They actually were throwing a lot of the stats out there, and none of the media were there, but they, obviously, somebody was watching. So that was really, really helpful, Tom. Thank you for coordinating that and putting that together. So both those have been talked about, so any other comments? Nope? Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Other.
Other. Does anybody have anything under other? I only compliment our local Wichita baseball wind surge team for their opening game yesterday. It was a lovely night, and it was a near-packed house and well-received, and they won. So thanks, and a shout-out to Jay Miller, coming back to his first game as the president or the general manager of the team, and it was, it looks like a great success and maybe off to a fun summer. So anything else under other? I don't see any.